Doesn't mean anything.
Okay.
Drink a lot of this hot water. I know, so there's.
We is.
You're early.
Well, that might explain why I had a hard time arguing with her about getting kids out to the streets playing.
Like, in a previous life, my people reported to me, so.
You know what this tells me? I wonder if they have had similar formats instead of take, because this would make sense if you either had that to our or if you took that we at. If you had Holy Family School is, then it would work.
But we.
Yeah, I think, I think what happened is they tried to modify it and that's what happens when you work from living documents.
I just thought that was a little.
Yeah.
I found a guy have a weird sense of humor.
Hello, folks.
Hey, welcome back.
Who is this? Oh, okay.
Welcome back, Pat. We missed you.
I wish I could say I'm glad. I could've stayed away forever. Oh, yeah. I was in Washington most of the time. Alexandria, Charlottesville, Columbus, Louisville. Nice time. I am completely booked every hour for the rest of this week. But Saturday, I have only one appointment at ten. You want to go on Saturday?
I'll be in Saturday.
It's crazy.
Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order?
Here.
Colin.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Miaski.
Here.
Revara.
Here. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion and second to approve the minutes of the June twenty first, twenty twenty one regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the June twenty one, twenty twenty one regular meeting.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda is public comments on agenda items only. Having none, we'll move. I need a motion and second to approve bills as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Approve ordinance one one six seven dash zero six two one two one, establishing the salary and benefits of the city clerk. And in this, and we also, uh, the city clerk is gonna take over the, um, economic, economic development duties.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance one one six seven zero six two one two one, establishing the salary and benefits of the city clerk.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Approve adding assistant clerk to full-time position to the I B E W contract. Basically, Aaron has been working forty hours a week. The assistant clerk's position initial rate is seventeen twenty-five an hour. And it is understood between the parties of the agreement that although the job duties and responsibilities of the assistant clerk and assistant clerk two positions are similar and interchangeable in, in some aspects of their clerical duties, it is clearly understood that they, that they do not have the same responsibilities nor duties with the assistant clerk two position having less responsibility and duties than the assistant clerk. And it goes on to say, uh, that if we would assign her, uh, for more than thirty days, and we would have to upgrade her.
Twenty now down.
Twenty days. I'm sorry. Any discussion? If no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to approve.
Well, since you say something about discussion, I'll, I'll offer it. La- last meeting, I was very excited to hear that we had an option on the table to discuss, uh, economic development. I know that's been a concern for a couple of years. It might not be the preferred method that my opinion would be to do. But I'm happy to say that my opinion isn't necessarily right. So, um, I'm willing to, uh, to, to try and attempt to see what other means we can do to get, to get this done. My only concern about this is if we find that we wanna take a different direction with how we wanna do economic development in the future, that adding somebody permanently to the I B E W contract, while I'm fine with that, it reduces our options in the future of what we wanna do. That's my only concern.
I, I, I understand, uh, but, um, you know, we do have a responsibility and, and management does have certain rights. And, uh, at this point in, uh, where we're at, I think this is the way we need to go. We need somebody to, uh, to have the pulse of what the, what's going on. And, uh, this is a way to, uh, to get this done.
There's more than likely enough, enough things to get done within the clerk's office even without the additional economic, um, development. So I guess I'm not so concerned about having her increased to full-time. My question, though, is if the assistant clerk would be on a, a leave of absence or an FMLA for some reason, are we saying that the clerk two, while covering for the, the first assistant clerk, would then get that pay? Is that what this is saying?
No.
No. If it's so assigned and we have other options too. There, there isn't mandated that we automatically upgrade her.
Well, it, it does. It says the assistant clerk two will be upgraded to the position of assistant clerk after twenty continuous days of being assigned to that position.
Of being assigned is the key.
Right. So if, so she would not be, the duties of the assistant clerk would not be done by two if the assistant clerk were on a leave of absence or an FMLA?
That would be a management decision.
Theoretically, the clerk, the city clerk could take over clerk one.
Right.
If that happened, it could be assigned.
Okay.
Is what he's.
That's what.
What I understand, what you're trying to say here.
Yes.
But it, but that may or may not happen that way.
Yeah. So if, so if the city council at that time assigns the city clerk, she's doing clerk two, or clerk one's duties, that would not be clerk two assigned to that role.
No. As, as I, uh, that's kind of the reason I abstained in the last two, um, last meeting is because it kind of all relates. I, I fully recognize that this is a viable option to go forward and we do need an option, so I appreciate that. Again, my concern is I, I know there's a lot of work that's gotta get done inside that office and I know we've, we've talked about that in the past. I think a lot of things that we've done recently has expanded upon what that, what that office does for roles and responsibilities. And I don't, what we're doing here, I don't think adds more resources to that office. Yes, it, it redistributes some responsibility a little bit. I don't have a problem giving people more pay and benefits because they've increased their responsibilities. But the bottom line is we haven't given any more, um, resources to that office to get the amount of work that gets done. And again, it's a viable option, but I just wanted to point, put my two cents out there as my concerns.
Understood, Jason. Thank you.
All right. I will make a motion to approve adding assistant clerk to full-time position to the I B E W contract.
I will second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Need to, uh, motion and second, I guess, to, uh, set July twelfth at six thirty for a working meeting.
Works for everybody, so I will make a motion to approve or set July twelfth, twenty twenty one at six thirty P M for the working meeting.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Next one is approve request from the Holy Family School to hold Holy Family Shuffle on Saturday, October second, twenty twenty one.
I will make a motion to approve request from Holy Family School to hold Holy Family Shuffle on Saturday, October second, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
The only thing I had under old business was, uh, the request to vacate the alley was taking care of that. Can't be done. Public comments. Art, did you wanna say anything?
Hello. My house unable to attend last month's meeting because I'm working. I just wonder if the city made any decisions on the Rysner building?
Not yet.
Uh, right now, we haven't made any decisions. We have to have some asbestos removed, uh, before we can tear it down. And because of the, uh, Indian bats, uh, we're unable to tear down that building until, what is it, October first, November first?
For November.
But, uh, no, we haven't made any decision on, uh, on what to do with that. Uh, I know you were interested in the, in the property. Do you have, can you give us any idea on what you're looking to do with that property?
Basically, just expanding my property. Uh, no commercial interest whatsoever, completely private. Ninety-nine percent positive is just gonna be my yard.
So you would tear the building down?
Yes. I definitely want the building gone. That is my, that's one of the things I'm trying to achieve, to make sure that building comes down.
You, you know, there's a little, um, property adjustment is gonna have to be made.
In the back?
Yeah.
Yes. I've talked to my neighbor now and we've discussed that. I've been thinking about this for quite some time, just been unable to act on it, being working out of town or whatever. But yeah, I understand that the property line, uh, extends back further towards his house. And, uh, we had discussed, uh, if I was able to buy the property, that I might sell him, uh, a piece of that property so that, uh, he can keep what he has. And, you know, it would, I think it would benefit him.
Benefit everybody. Okay. Thank you very much for taking the time to come and, uh, and addressing the console. Thank you.
Drew Maranin, uh, I'd like to say that I know that fireworks are illegal in Illinois. And for the last two weeks, we've had our windows closed, our air conditioning on, and the same neighbors about three blocks away, and now there's like three or four of them and it's maybe like a competition. Can we get something done about that? I mean, it's like twenty years worth of listening. I don't mind on the Fourth of July, that's the Fourth of July, but not for two weeks and not till twelve o'clock at night. And you can't hear them if you're riding around in a car. You gotta kind of get out and walk a little bit and see these people. And use your ears, you know? And the other thing I got is, um, with these carnivals coming into town, the carnival that comes here is one of the major carnivals. They're just one unit of many. And it seems like we're catering to these guys too much. We give them all the water they need, give them all the power they need. Do you know that these guys have their own power? Why don't we let them bring in their own generator? My uncle used to have the carnival downtown Springfield Valley, about thirty rides. Had it every year until they got, and on his own power. These major carnivals got that. Did you ever think about going down to Springfield when they have the, there's a weekend where all the carnivals, they come in there and they're looking for more spots? This isn't the only carnival.
Maybe you're not aware, but just to give you a heads up, the only thing that's running off of the city's power is that we do temporary power for, is the vendors that come in. The, uh, the, the different food trucks, all of the carnival rides and everything like that, they don't use city power. They have their own generators for that.
Well, they're sure using city water. Because I came in and told the mayor one day, they're down there washing their trucks off with city water. Now, we can have city water and we have to pay double sewer, but, you know, they can come in, use all they want. The one year they come in, they put a swimming pool up and filled the swimming pool, about a three or four footer. You know? I've only lived here since seventy-four. Yeah, I think maybe I've seen a few things. And like I said, my, uh, my, most of these carnivals have their own power. So, you know, uh, we should charge them for the water because they're using a lot of it. And then, like I even told the mayor, uh, the lines that come out of their trailers, their travel trailers, it's called gray water, which is, you know, used from their, you know, washing their hands and all that stuff. And they're just running it out on the ground. When my mom and dad had their sand for thirty-five years, you have to run that into a sewer. You can't just run it out on the ground. But this other thing with the fireworks, this is going on far too long, twelve o'clock at night. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Any other public comments? Commissioner reports.
Do you want me to do Fun Fest?
Uh, yeah, you can do it.
Um, all right. So we finally got the Fun Fest numbers back to, over the last couple of weeks. Total, so net income would be twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. So compared to the last three years before that, it's on average. This year, we actually had the fifty-fifty down because we didn't even know if we were gonna have it. Second, donations were down because we weren't even sure if we were gonna have it until two months before. Overall, I am very happy with how it all went. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else here that would be a little bit of an outlier, but we also didn't do banner sales this year, which usually goes part of Fun Fest. So that's an extra added revenue that was not there this year. And the carnival itself, so we gave them free water, but they paid us forty thousand, six hundred and four dollars for wristband sales, vendor fees, and they also gave us an advertising co-op of fifteen hundred dollars. I am not an expert.
I'm not aware of that.
I'm just letting you know, we didn't go through forty thousand dollars in water. Thank you.
Do they pay their taxes?
Yeah, I didn't see anything out, out of the ordinary with the, with the Fun Fest. I think if you just wanna add in the blue area, that twenty twenty, we didn't have one, but nineteen was cold and wet. So, um, that could have affected, uh, nineteenth's. Although I don't see their, their income here either. I don't know why. I don't know why that would be missing.
I have no idea why.
Because we're missing sixteen.
Or eighteen, nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So it'd be nice to know what we did those years. But I thought everything else looked good.
Jason?
Oh, I do have something.
Yeah.
Fire calls, we, we did have sixteen last month. The ambulance, uh, were down just a little bit. We only had fifty-seven calls, uh, and twenty of those were transfers. I would like to say that they, for that pork chop dinner that we had here, they did serve nine hundred and ninety-five meals, which was awesome. So I think everybody who did support that, the pork chop dinner, the dollars that were made, those figures are not yet in. Uh, the police were very busy, um, as well this month, twenty-one cases, eighty-six traffic stops, and sixteen firework calls between July third and July fourth alone. So they have been, uh, out trying to get to those neighborhoods that, uh, we have had the, the fireworks going. It is difficult. I do know, uh, same thing with LaSalle and Peru, uh, police department. It's just kind of like a chasing down to the next one, to the next one, and actually finding them. It's has been difficult. Thank you. And then, uh, last but certainly not least, our officer for the month of June was Evan Dutlinger. So I'd like to congratulate, uh, Evan on his hard work.
I do have, uh, quite a few things. I'll start off with the one that's going on right now. So there was, there's still an ongoing outage, uh, in the city. Uh, there's an underground section of Clark Street. I don't know the exact reason yet. So once we find that out, there is some reports that it could have been some, somebody digging, but until that's confirmed, I'm not sure. Uh, right now, there's a single phase that's out, so it's affecting some people on Oakwood, Arbor, uh, and I think the seven hundred block of Clark Street. So we are looking at that. They're actually out there hand digging it right now, so we will get that up. I will tell you that we are aware that Clark Street is the oldest underground, uh, electric in the city. Uh, it went in in the seventies. It's rare that underground, uh, electric goes bad, uh, but it is one of the older ones out there. So we're looking at that and we're gonna, we're gonna get people back up and then we're gonna look for a permanent fix and I'll have more to follow on that. As far as other electric stuff going on, I don't have a lot to report on this right now. I think I, I mentioned last time that we did get approved for a second feed into the city. So before we get too hot and heavy on that, one of the things that we were also considering was a one thirty-eight kilovolt feed. I don't have all the information, but I do have some good information. One of the concerns was that we wanted to get that, was to make sure that we could not have any kind of class of customer that we would have to turn away from Oglesby, that we'd be able to support anything. So I was under the impression that the one thirty-eight kilovolt feed was required for that. Upon talking to our electrical engineers, that is true, but for the purpose of capacity. The one thirty-eight kilovolt feed would give us significantly more capacity to be able to do that. The largest customers really you're ever gonna service is still thirty-four five, and there are ways for us to do that. Because of the second feed, there is so much capacity available to that, the city would have to expand its electrical load by like four times before we'd exceed that capacity. So the one thirty-eight kilovolt feed doesn't really have value as far as making sure we can give to other customers. The other piece of advantage, though, that we still have to research is the wholesale cost that a city would get for electric at one thirty-eight kilovolt versus thirty-four five. If there is a significant piece of savings there, then it's something for us to explore because then if we can pay for that infrastructure off, then that's obviously more savings that we can give to our residential customers. So that'd be the goal. So I need to find that out. I should have that information, uh, by next, uh, meeting. If there is value there, this process might take a little bit longer. If there isn't a lot of value there, we're gonna be getting started pretty quickly on getting the second feed into the city. Because I know G T I and other customers, and I know residents wanna have that redundancy and everything. Next, water. Couple of things. Uh, the end of Water Street has a fire hydrant that is leaking. It's not leaking much, but we do need to replace that. To do that, we are gonna have to, uh, take an outage for everybody that is east of Cookie Kingdom. We are looking to do that on July fourteenth, so not tomorrow. Not tomorrow's Wednesday, the next Wednesday after that. It's gonna be from like seven A M to three P M, somewhere between there. We'll send out a code red probably tomorrow and then another one twenty-four hours before, just to make sure people are aware. Speaking of this, when it came to, uh, fire hydrants, I was able to reach out to Representative Lance Yednack today and sure enough, I, I got a response same day. It was fantastic to talk about how we had our grant for fire hydrants almost two years ago. So in there, my question to him basically was, am I able to replace these fire hydrants? Because I'm being told that the, this grant, the money might not come for almost up to five years. That's way too long for us to not have to do anything with fire hydrants. So my question to him was, can I replace these fire hydrants and not put ourselves in jeopardy of not getting that grant money when it comes in? The answer I got was a bit murky. So he is reaching to somebody else that's in the legislature. I will tell you this, that I did not know, he did revise the writing in the capital bill for us. It no longer just says fire hydrants. It actually got approved, it says fire hydrants and other capital infrastructure. So I have to verify that. It's looking good. If I can find out that I can use that money for other things, we'll go ahead and just get all these fire hydrants fixed and repaired. But I will find that out on that. Next thing, uh, the motorfield tax jobs we got going throughout the city. I know there's been a lot of people talking and complaining because this happens every time we get streets done. They, people go, what about my street? What about my alley? I will tell you that the alleys that are done, we did the two biggest alleys in the city. City Creek Lane is complete, Prospect is complete. I still think there's some seeding going on. I have to verify if the Dickinson House got done, so there's, either the projects are done or they're almost done. Uh, I will tell you, and I've been telling residents, that every January, we reevaluate what streets were out there. We assign a priority level to them, how bad they are, what, what needs to get done. We did, we were able to get what we thought was gonna be two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of work done for only about two hundred and thirty thousand of motorfield tax money. So there's more money there for next year's worth of projects to do. So that's the good news. And the last thing I have is I had a lot of people contact me lately in the city about the no parking situations we have throughout the city. And I've been telling everybody, I gave the city engineer a heads up. I, I sent an email to our attorney so we can discuss this in quite a bit of length, uh, at our working meeting. We'll see if we can get the explanation put out to everybody of why the ordinances are the way they are. And then we'll see if we can go into the legal reasoning of what we are allowed to change and kind of proceed from there. I know that was a lot. That's all I got.
Thank you.
You have nothing tonight.
That's all.
I, I just got a, a couple short. One is, uh, we were able to have a great family fan, family, uh, family friendly fest because Oglesby came together, everybody worked together to make it such a great experience. I wanna thank the events committee, the city employees, all the volunteers, North America Midway, the vendors and everyone, uh, that came together, uh, to make it all work. I'm gonna address about two comments here that was made earlier. Number one, Mid-America, uh, it's computerized, uh, between Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Every ride, how many ri, how many people use that ride is all recorded. And, uh, we did receive a, a check, uh, a check from the, uh, from Mid-Wa, Mid-America, for the rides and the vendors for over forty thousand dollars. They have been great to work with. As far as the gray water, I went down and checked the complaint. The, uh, what I seen down there, it was being drained into the parking lot, uh, swimming pool parking lot with drains into the sewer. The only, um, person that was washing trucks down there, uh, was the electric department. Mark was cleaning up the truck that they had it out on a job, uh, the day or two before. And, uh, it had a whole bunch of mud on it. It had grease on it from, from all that they were doing. So, uh, we wanted to keep the, uh, keep the, uh, trucks clean. With that, if there isn't anything more, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do have.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I did, I didn't see anything.
I have one thing I forgot.
I, I went down and checked it out.
It's a short one. I apologize, there's one thing I did forget. Of the people that were concerned about the no parking, uh, I gave them the option that if they wanted to send me an email to read a comment if they didn't wanna come. I've only got one person that sent me something to read off next week, uh, and I know there's at least four or five others. So unless that means they're planning on coming to, to, to speak publicly, which I do invite them to do, uh, please make sure you get that to me so I can read them off for you. That's all I got.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Colin. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Revara.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.
I don't know if I'll be able to attend, but hey.